Good evening. I'd like to call to order the town council meeting for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024 at 7 o'clock. We're in the Harvey Hearing Room. Roll call, please.
Counselor Tassaneri.
Here.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor DiMarco.
Here.
Counselor Aiello.
Here.
Counselor Swope.
Here.
Counselor DeRoz.
Here.
Vice President Belcher.
Here.
President Luteri.
Yeah. Please stand for the pledge led by Counselor DeRoz.
Let's lead the lead of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from the April 16th meeting have been circulated. Everyone's had an opportunity to go over.
Motion to approve.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Counselor DiMarco, second by Counselor Swope. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As always know, the ayes have it. Public hearing. We have a couple of public hearings tonight. First is that the town appropriate $100,000 from free cash. And that came out of, that was sent to finance. And I will open that public hearing and go to Counselor Tassaneri. No, no comments.
Counselor DeRoz.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor DeRoz.
Uh, yes.
Kentucky Derby hangover.
Uh, I did on, on, on a few of the early races.
Okay, so here we go.
Yes, we just had a finance committee meeting, subcommittee meeting earlier this evening, and we did review all three of these appropriation motions by the town manager, Moreno. And I'll be reading those three later under Old Business, but all three are coming out of finance committee with positive recommendation.
Okay, are there any questions from the public? So the free cash is requesting to use $50,000, $100,000 from free cash, $50,000 would be going to the compensated absence reserve fund and $50,000 to the OPEB trust fund. Any discussion on the council? Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. Did we have another public hearing here? $20,000, we don't need a public hearing. $13,000, we don't need a public hearing. We have delivery of the proposed budget from the town manager.
Yes, unfortunately, it's similar presentation that we made at the spring forum. I had a PowerPoint, but with the lack of internet, I can't present it on screen. So, I mean, I'll just give some of the highlights, similar to what I did at the spring forum. We worked extensively with the capital assets committee to create the five-year capital plan that's included in the budget. Some of the highlights from that are, you know, pointing out, we need some, based on the facilities needs assessment that was done by Brightly and the Woodard and Curran capital assessment for our water system, you know, there's substantial projects, you know, over $100 million over the next, you know, five to 10 years that we need in infrastructure repairs. Obviously, we'll schedule those out, apply for grants and whatnot. This year, we're looking at, I think it's approximately, let me just get the total here. This year would be 1.6 for capital, $200,000 will be funded by a Green Communities grant that we're going to apply for, free cash of $2998,000, capital stabilization of $946, $1996,000, Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings, $110,000, and then we're also requesting $120,000 from the Winthrop Foundation. So that spreads out to get you to the 1.6. But coming up in future years, which includes, you know, new fire station, new police station, those kind of large capital projects are in there too. But that's, take a look at that. It's on the proposed budget. That's on the website. But that's, that's some of the highlights on that. I want to thank the capital assets committee. They did a lot of good work on that, fine-tuned the process, made it better than what it was last year, and we'll look to improve on the capital plan as we move forward. With regard to the budget process, I worked very hard with the department heads, you know, and the school superintendent on this, this year's budget. We presented the base budget at the spring forum. It's also in the budget book that's available on the website. This budget is in what they call the Government Finance Officers Association format, otherwise known as GFOA format. It really increases the transparency of the budget, does a breakdown on the departments, gets into, you know, a lot of where the funding comes from, reserve funds, enterprise funds, grants, you know, across the board. We've got a lot of information, good information in that budget. Presented to the finance committee on April 4th. They started meeting with department heads on April 11th, and they have been every either Wednesday or Thursday since then, and they're meeting again this Thursday. I think it's assessing and treasurer collectors up this week, so. Some of the challenges that we had for this year's budget, obviously, school budget shortfalls. You know, I talked about that at the spring forum, you know, probably might be able to get through this year, but definitely, you know, to get through FY '26, there will be a, you know, probably a budget override from the schools requested. You know, obviously, that will go to the ballot, probably two and a half override. The funding for the large infrastructure projects is difficult, fire and police stations, obviously, we need debt exclusions for that, water and sewer projects, stormwater system repairs and upgrades. You know, that's all either debt exclusions or try to find grant money. We keep trying to manage the increased expenses for the town and the school. For example, our health insurance went up 10.6% this year. You know, and that's town and school, that's a large, larger than we've seen in the past, in recent years. It's always, it's been under 10 for the last, you know, few years. And then our new collective bargaining agreements. We just finished, as I announced early, the fire department. They're done for the next three years, but starting on 6/30 this fall, we'll start negotiating with all the unions, including on the school side. They all are up on June 30th, 2025, so we'll want to get those new agreements in place and whatever impacts they have on the FY '26 budget. And then climate resiliency, dealing with the impacts of the rising sea levels, flooding, as we've seen this past, you know, seasons, we've certainly seen a lot of extreme storms and high tides, storm surges and whatnot that has caused flooding in town. And the work that needs to be done, not only the design work, but the funding for the repairs, you know, that's going to fall into town or through grant funds. So that's, stuff will have to work over the next 10, 15, 20 years. So certainly, I would recommend, kudos to the finance commission and committee. They've been doing a great job. So I would say anybody who's got time, go to those meetings. They do a real deep dive on the departments that are coming in. They ask the hard questions. You know, all those meetings taped, they're available to watch if you can't make it. So I would say keep up that good work, and we look forward to presenting the budget to the council final approval in June. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. And the budget, again, bottom line budget is about $61 million and change. If you add the enterprise funds in, it's close to $75 million.
Yeah, 61, 205, 014, yeah.
And again, some of the biggest changes was 10% increase in benefit cost, which is quite substantial.
Yes.
And, and hard to deal with. And now that we've changed the budgeting format last year, which you did, which I think was a very good job, basically, it's a 60-40 split. That is 60% of the money is going to the schools, 40% staying with the town, but the schools are responsible for everything that has to do with the schools. So when benefits got hit, that's a huge expense for them to try to, to try to deal with. And the schools are also ending their ESSA funds in the fall, which is going to be a very dramatic hit for them too. So I'm sure there'll be much more to come on that. But thank you. Are there any questions from the public on the budget presentation? There'll be much more talk over the next couple of months on the budget, and again, every Thursday night, yes. I did not say chapter seven, I did not. The split was 60-40 from the town, 60-40 of the funds available for the town, 60% to the schools, 40%. And that used to be basically 50-50, but now that we've added in all the expenses that are related to the school, even the schools are paying for the school debt on the building, the interest on the building, the benefits for employees, the workman's comp, the unemployment insurance and such. Yes?
Hi, Carol, Precinct One. With the insurance going up 10% on the school staff side or...
Townwide.
Oh, that's townwide, okay.
Yeah, across the whole, yeah.
Across the whole town. Is there any thought on having employees contribute more? Is that even a possibility? I'm not sure how that all works.
I think everything's a possibility, right?
Right.
But it's not going to be a possibility in the fiscal '25 budget. And the town is on the GIC, which the unions agreed to several years ago, which has saved the town a lot of money. Being on the GIC, it's just, this has been a, a big hit this year. It's usually been between like 3.7, 5.7, 6%, but this has been substantial this year. And it's not just Winthrop, it's...
It's everything.
Any, now, I do apologize because the town is out of internet, but we have been able to get on Zoom through Denise's phone. So there are some people on Zoom that would have to ask a question via the phone, I guess, or via a text. If there are any questions, we will wait to for a little bit. Okay. Any questions on the council right now? And I'm sure, again, there's going to be a lot of discussion. I encourage all councilors and obviously the citizens to go to these finance commission meetings. They're basically every Thursday night, it might be Wednesday one more, but they're basically every Thursday night at 6:00 in this room. They're all open to the public. There are various department heads that will be presenting at each of the meetings. I know next week, I believe, the schools will be here on the 19th, I think it is, and that, that's always a really good presentation. And there will be a lot of questions asked by the finance commission, I'm sure. So I encourage people to attend. Any other questions? If not, we will close that public hearing. I will close my budget binder. Public comment. I don't, I can't reach it. Mr. Dowd.
Mr. President, Precinct One. Very briefly, I've been concerned about the seawalls from the north side of town and on the south side of town. At the north side, the seawall is sometimes not very effective. There's been closings, without closing the gate. I told this council last month that I personally went up there and investigated some details on the wall. I'm hoping that somebody on this council becomes interested in maintaining that wall. I took another view of the wall just last week, and big chunks of that wall are falling out onto the sidewalk. Once this, once it gets into the steel, the steel gets rusty, and that creates areas where it will deteriorate the concrete. I'm asking for somebody on the town or with it to, to get down, or send an engineer down to that wall and determine if the wall's going to fall down. We've seen walls fall down consistently in this time since the town was established. During the blizzard of '78, about 100-foot section of the wall fell down up by the green bars. So it can happen. So I'm very concerned about that wall. The other thing is the south end of Yarrow Beach, where the Mass Water Resource put up a 20-foot wall with Revetment and filled in the tideland down there, which is causing ocean corbel to build up at the south end. It was mentioned by the manager a couple of months ago that the DEP wants something done on Yarrow Beach. I'm not sure how many times the berm was put up or taken down. It seems to be a number of years now. And that berm was just another added protection for the houses on Yarrow Beach. I did get the information from the DEP with a FOIA request, and it seems that the DEP is more concerned about the plovers on Yarrow Beach rather than be concerned about... Did you shake your head, no, Joe?
No, I, 100% agree.
I'm agreeing with you too.
So shake your head, yes. You went like this, but you said yes. I'm very concerned about that. Thank you very much. So the DEP is more concerned about the birds than the people's houses on Yarrow Beach. Maybe they don't understand what has happened at Yarrow Beach because of the buildup of the rubble caused by the wall that was built there and the tideland that was filled in. Maybe we should have come here or get another thing going here so that they understand what is happening at Yarrow Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anybody? No? Yes, Massey.
Hi, Marcy Hamilton, Precinct Two. I just want to thank everybody as of the time that the short-term flooding situation has happened. I haven't been flooded at all, and we've had some heavy, heavy rigs. I want to thank everybody for their communication, their collaboration, and their commitment to that area. Also, I was wondering if we could get something on the newsletter or just an update of what's happening, because I know they put some type of, they did some type of work in that area with maybe putting the piping underneath the ground, and if we could get updates on that, that would be great, maybe in the newsletter and through the DPW, because I always call John, and then John calls Tony, and Tony calls. And now I know how it works. So, so, but if it was on the newsletter and what's upcoming and what's happening, then, you know, there wouldn't be any need for help. Thank you.
Thank you, Massey. All right. Any other public comment? Yes?
Carol, Precinct One. Can, is there any update on the conversation between the council and Secretary Augustus?
Not that I know of. I will, will, it will be touched upon, I'm assuming, in the town manager report, but nothing that I have to report yet. Nothing that I should know. Any other public comment? There will be another round later in the meeting. All right. Correspondence, Denise?
I do. Diane Sands, she wanted to notify the council that six-month of citizens filed a legal complaint and joined Rockport sued against the MBTA multifamily zoning bill, Article 3A. Kathleen Capuccio is requesting information on certain grant programs that the town has received in funding. Cheryl Howard opposes MBTA 3A. Diana Vines adamantly opposes the 3A MBTA zoning to be considered in the CBD. Judy Hanlon opposes the 3A MBTA zoning. Laurel Kennedy supports the 3A zoning, and Cassie Pratt supports the 3A zoning. That's it.
Thank you. All right. Committee reports. Counselor DeRoz, finance.
Yes, we met earlier tonight. We covered three appropriations motions that the town manager has requested. Would you like me to save those for the old business or...?
Yes, I believe they all came out with favorable recommendations.
All three came out with favorable recommendations.
Discussed in old business.
We will describe them and discuss them then.
Thank you. Rules and ordinance. Counselor Belcher.
Thank you. Rules and ordinance met last week to continue work on the short-term rental ordinance. That would cover things like Airbnb, but not exclusively Airbnb. That's almost wrapped up. We're hoping to pass that out of committee later this week, and then it will come to the council for a full discussion.
Very good, thank you. All right, school department report. We met last evening. The major discussion topic was a new reading curriculum for elementary school, and we decided on a curriculum called Bookworms. And I do want to thank the reading specialist in the elementary schools, Mary McGonigal and Megan Ball. They are, their unwavering support and, and work on this over the past several months has been incredibly appreciated by the school committee, and it will be fantastic for the children of our community. So I want to thank Mary and Megan for their hard work and dedication to the Winthrop Public Schools. Without applause, town manager report.
Talked about during public comment, but the fencing is out for the plovers on Yarrow Beach. We did get permission to set that up. So just full clarification, I did discuss it earlier, but we are under what's called an administrative consent order with the DEP. The berm that was referenced during public comment is no longer in accordance with the Wetlands Protection Act. That's what we were informed a year ago, November. You know, we did put it up the year prior. DEP wasn't happy about that, but we did put it up. And essentially, what we did is we go in and we pulled the sand off the seawall, create the berm, and then that does add the protection that was referenced during public comment. But they won't let us do that anymore, you know, for a lot of reasons, but mainly, it's the, you know, Wetlands Protection Act, it's not in compliance with it. We're working with them to come up with a beach, what they call a beach management plan. We have hired a consultant. We've had meetings with DEP. They have been out to the beach. They have been out there. They've walked it even recently. It's probably two or three weeks ago. Eric Worrell, who's the, the director of the Northeast Division of DEP, has been out here along with some of his staff members. So we're gonna probably plan a meeting, actually, we are gonna plan a meeting early June out at the beach to give an update on what's going on with DEP, talk to the neighbors, let them know why we're not out there with heavy equipment right now and what's going on with DEP, as we hope to get the beach management plan in place so we can improve the conditions on the beach. And, you know, we can do a lot of stuff by hand right now, but they won't let us bring the heavy equipment out there. So that's what's going on right now, and that's where we stand. We did get two MVP grants in, in accordance with the deadline of April 24th. They extended that a few days, I think, but 1.2 million for Morton Banks and Morton and Bank Street to do the design for the repair to help with the flooding down there. And then additional one for the, you know, Pico area around Fisherman's Bend to start some planning and assessment studies down there for $400,000. So those two applications went in. We'll find out shortly. If we're asked to prioritize, my priority will be the 1.2 for Morton and Banks. We've put a lot of effort into that, so we want to, you know, keep that project going. But if we can get both, great, but if not, we'll, you know, certainly prioritize Morton and Banks. Speaking of that, we did have two good meetings with the neighbors on Morton and Banks. One was just with the specific eight homeowners along the marsh that, you know, continually flood. We had a separate meeting with representatives from the Woods Hole Group. I was away out of town, but Chief Delahanti and our conservation commission chair, Kim Dimes, met with them. So they were able to talk about the frustrations with what's going on now, but also, you know, understanding what the long-term plan is. But what came out of that meeting is they're looking for some, you know, similar to what's going on in Tilestone and Girlstone, and immediate relief that we can do with maybe some sandbags and some other things we can do to help with the flooding down there. So myself and the chiefs are looking at that along with Steve Call, the DPW director, to see if we can get sandbags and maybe do some stuff where we build a berm back up to give them some protection, you know, during the storm surges until we can get a final fix, you know, designed and hopefully implemented down there. But again, that's a three or four-year process. So something we can do immediately to help out during the storm surges and the heavy rain events. That will be helpful. As was talked about during Tassel and Girdlestone, we did put a sleeve in, Steve Callar and his crew, thank you for that, a sleeve across, sorry, we're on a blank right now. Pleasant, thank you, Pleasant Street. Mental outage there. But anyway, across Pleasant Street, so we don't have to get the police details when we pump. So that was one of the things we talked about when we get the pumps there and we get the larger pipes, we can just sleeve it. We'll have quick connects on each end, so we can just connect the pipes, have the pumps run, and it'll make the flooding events, you know, when we get the heavy rains down there, we can pump the water across and get it out to the ocean like we've been doing without having to shut the road down. So that will help out and make it a lot easier to process and keep expenses down. Talked about summer tunnel a little bit. We got summer tunnel closure. They did announce today that they're only going to shut the tunnel down in the summertime for a month, from July 5th to August 5th. That's less, a month less than what they originally thought. Like last summer, they did two months, so that's only down for a month. However, there are some additional weekend closures coming up between now and that date. 5/17, they won't be closed this weekend from Mother's Day. It'll be closed the weekend of 5/17. Won't be closed for Memorial Day. It'll be open then, closed on 5/31, and then closed again on 6/7, 6/14, and 6/21, and then closed on 7/5 for the month. So that's where we stand on that. They are announced, you know, the discounted ferry rates and whatnot, not locked in what they will be. They were 240 last year. I don't know what the ferry rates will be this year, hopefully something similar, but they will be discounted ferry rates, blue, uh, blue line ride for free, and the East Boston Ferry will be free. So those are the, similar to last year. Attended several town events. Ferry was one of them. Took the first ride of the day on 4/29. That was great. It was actually crowded for the first day. You know, sometimes it takes a little while to kick off, but the boat was crowded. Down at Quincy, picked up a lot of people there, so it was good to go into Boston. One of the things they did do, I know people were talking earlier about the long times, they did cut down on the 8 o'clock, which is the primary commuting route. They stopped the, they took out the stop at Logan Airport. So that shortens it up. It gets you in by 8:45, 8:50 into the, you know, the aquarium in Seaport. So that, you know, cuts down a little bit. It's an 8 o'clock pickup in Winthrop. You know, there's some talk, if maybe we went five or 10 minutes earlier, that would get you there by, you know, whatever, 8:40 instead, and that would be a little bit better. So we're still, you know, trying to fine tune that a little bit, but that's where we stand on that. Also, just the Chamber event, thanks to everybody who showed up for that. That's always a great event. And then the Little League opening day was over the weekend, so, which was a great event. And we had a very, one of our own stars sing the national anthem, Rob's daughter, so she did a great job. So thank you for that. But other than that, I'm certainly open for questions.
And I will say, just to start here, that we will be having a council, special council meeting next Tuesday night.
Yeah.
So that's May 14th.
Yep.
It will be 7 o'clock. It will be held at the Senior Center, and we will have the, our new consultant, RKG.
RKG, yeah.
For 3A, right? So they will be there. I just wanted to have a special meeting just for that. So that will be the only item on the agenda. Have a presentation, we'll have some discussion, open, open mic for questions. So I encourage people to attend. We will have that in the transcript this week, and hopefully it will be on CAT as well. So that will be next Tuesday, May 14th, 7 o'clock at the DeLeo Senior Center. Questions for the manager. Counselor Tassaneri, Counselor Munson?
I have a couple of just, the tunnel closures, I didn't get to write down all the dates, but would you say, it's safe to say that the town website is a good reliable source of dates?
And Mastaw, you know, they, on the Mastaw page as well. But yeah, we're going to post them up there. They only came out, they announced the one-month closure, but the actual weekend dates just came out a couple hours ago. So we'll make sure we get that up there.
Gotcha. If you don't mind, I'll just continue. As far as Morton Street, I was there at the Woods Hole event, and I was impressed with Woods Hole Group. I think that they sound like a great group. But the impression, the impression I got from them was that almost all the money to work on that project, being it's the highest risk in that marsh area, Revere, Boston, and Winthrop included, they're going to get money from the federal government and the state?
Usually both, yeah. It'll be NOAA, FEMA, you know, once you get to construction, there's multiple funding sources.
And yet, we are, and you, you applied for the MVP grant for the 1.2 million.
To get the design done, yeah.
To get the design done. So, so can you give the town a sense of what obligation the town will have financially to, to match or to kind of throw in on that project?
In all, it's too early to say. Like, we can do in-kind matches with, you know, staff time. There's other groups that kick in, like the current MVP grant. We've got the National Fish and Wildlife Association that's kicking in 60 grand. So that covered some of the town expenses for the current grant that we're in now. And there's other funding sources that, so you lay sort of like, you know, you'll, you'll layer in other grants to help offset the costs. So I couldn't give you a hard number. It'll all depend what the construction is and the different funding sources, so.
Gotcha. In terms of the immediate kind of relief that the locals are looking for, it did seem like there was a fairly, and what you've done, you guys have done a great job already with, you know, the Pleasant, Tolston, Girlstone area. What I'm wondering is, is the town, the people that live there were asking for the, some of the barricades to prevent people from driving through the large amount of flooding to spread into people's houses and basements. It seems like a no-brainer to be able to just put just a few barricades where people can put it out in advance of the DPW. But is there any other immediate resolutions that we can give? You said you might be able to create a berm. I just want to be able to see if we can help them sooner than later.
It's the street flooding, what people are concerned about. We've had council president and I, and the neighbors have had several conversations about it, and Steve Callar and I. And the DPW does get out there. They put barricades out, you know, when the storms are coming. We watch the tide reports probably, you know, just as much and more so than the neighbors. And we know when the storms are coming. We know when the high tides are coming. The problem is, is our barricades, we need to maybe, and Steve can jump in, but maybe get some heavier ones, because we have a lot of the plastic ones.
Or they just float?
And when you get the high winds and the storms, and it's usually surrounding these events, they blow all over the place. Yeah, well, that too, yeah.
Away or in?
Move them so they can get their car through.
It's difficult, especially in that area. There's so many theater streets to that spot. Unless you've got police presence, I mean, even a DPW presence has to go right around this with just DPW. So it's, it's not even a matter of keeping barricades in place. It's a matter of people understanding and not wanting to go down.
Appreciate it. Lastly, I didn't want to waste any more time. I just wanted to, let's see here.
Lastly, I didn't wanna waste any more time, I just wanted to, let's see here. As far as the, that's it for now. Thank you. My apologies.
Just had a follow-up on what Consul Munson asked. The existing MVP grant is for how much and it's covering what work? Because you just applied for 1.2.
Approximately, it was a feasibility study and approximately 480 and change, somewhere in that neighborhood. And again, the in-kind match was about 60, which was covered from another group, the National Fish and Wildlife Association, and then, you know, we had some staff hours that covered some of the in-kind stuff of the town.
So that's great. So we're moving forward from feasibility to design?
To design, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Consul Swope.
I just wanna mention Anna Leary's name, and I know that my friend John will follow up. Anna was a person that helped on this grant with us.
Not the 1.2.
She's actually dialed in right now.
Oh, hi, Anna, hi. Suzanne. No, the $400,000.
Yeah, $1,000.
And I just, I think, I wanted to mention it, not only because I'm very proud of the fact that, actually, my daughter gave me her name and then passed it on, but she had thought about applying to become a member of Town Council, but she has another job that is very demanding, and she was just getting into this new job, so she, she wasn't able to do that. But she was willing to come in and work with us on a grant. We need those kinds of people all over this town to step up, because they're such talent here. And sometimes we don't know them, but, so Anna was, thanks, Anna.
Consul Ilo.
I'm sorry.
Just a little bit more of a drill down. First of all, great work being down on a person with a planner on getting both those grant applications, and that was really terrific. I also had a couple of neighbors tell me that, I know you had started talking with Not These Mosquito Control.
Yes.
And apparently they're on site, looking at the situation and trying to do some dredging. We probably don't have it coming from them yet, I assume.
Well, that, I will report on that later, but they went out to the initial, they thought they were gonna be able to come out with some hand crews and do it. It's a little more substantial than that, which means they had to go back and talk to Army Corps, because it's a tidal area. And so they're doing their homework on their end, and they're gonna get back to me with a plan. I did submit a letter requesting a plan, so we've got our official request in, but we're waiting to hear back from them.
That's great, because that's another piece of immediate relief to the people in Seaview and Pico.
And that hasn't been touched since, you know, over $2,000.
Twenty-five years, I think.
Yeah, exactly. It's been a while, so.
And then with respect to the engineering work for both Girdlestone and Pico, I know we had allocated a $50,000 amount.
Yep.
Back in March, I think, I believe. And we had applied for a grant from the feds for the balance of the $700,000 roughly. I'm assuming we haven't heard from the feds yet.
I have not. I checked on it almost weekly now, so, yeah.
Where are we in terms of the progress of the consultant? I'm assuming they've burned through the $50,000.
Yeah, they did. It was just to do the site plan, the existing condition site plan, so they were out there with some machines, and I said, no, some of the neighbors saw them. We're waiting to get that plan back. I don't, Steve, I don't think we've got it yet, have we?
All the survey work is done, but the plan, we have not seen the document.
Right, yeah.
So I want to refresh, I don't wanna speak for everybody, but my recollection of the council's intent generally was, if the federal money wasn't coming, we should do the next dollar of work out of town funds that can keep the engineering going. Would be helpful if at the next council meeting, Steve could think about, this next dollar of work, another $75,000 or $100,000, or whatever, you know, whatever milestone you think both projects need to get to. And then the council could have a discussion about whether to use the local dollars while we're waiting for the federal dollars to come, just so we can keep pushing that project down the road. So if we could have that.
We'll take a look at what Woodward incurred, or whatever, whoever's designing it.
That would be, that would be helpful.
Consul DeRoz.
Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of things. I wanted to dovetail on what Consul Swope was saying, that when Suzanne says that people like Anna Leary pitch in, everybody believe it, because this $400,000 grant that they just submitted with our review and Tony's approval, Anna and a friend of hers who works in the field took all day out of their day on Sunday, two weeks ago, and then were on a phone call with us, I believe it was on a Thursday afternoon, got a day's extension to submit the grant, worked with us to review it, particularly Town Manager Moreno, and then were able to submit it on our behalf right under a very tight deadline. So these are folks who happen to have expertise in the community, who, without any structure from us yet, I know that the council president is reviewing a motion that I submitted that will hopefully come up at the next meeting about the creation of a climate advisory commission that hopefully would include people like Anna. But I just wanted to give a shout-out, and I believe Anna's still on the line, so Anna, hopefully you're feeling the love from all of us right now, because all of us are definitely in support of securing, you know, 1.6 million in state funds to help us with the, and like I said at a few other, a few council meetings ago, rather than be reactive, rather than rely on one man who is down a town planner to not only do all the reactive stuff along with Steve and everybody else that helps out, but also, maybe even more importantly, look ahead to the things we can do to prevent these things from happening in the future. I just want to say thank you, thank you, Anna, and really hope that at the next Town Council meeting, we can move on this motion to create the Citizens Advisory Committee. We do have incredible talent residents right here in Winthrop who work in climate resiliency for a day job, for a living, and we hope to tap into their expertise, and thank you.
Consul Ilo, one more.
Yeah, I just wanted to get back to Mr. Dowd's comments, which is now, I think, the third time he's been talking about the seawalls vote at Shaw Beach and Euro Beach.
Yes.
If you could, at the next meeting, describe what actions that the council might take, because these are problems caused by other parties. DCR in one case, San Diego Area in another case. Provide a little guidance about the kind of actions we should take, as well as if we should be doing any engineering ourselves, et cetera, or any analysis, that would be helpful, because those are clearly big, big, big problems for us. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice President.
I don't know if you've heard anything back from Augusta's office, but if we could put the packet of information that we've sent to them somewhere publicly, I think that would be.
It's just the zoning bylaws. They wanted to analyze the bylaws, so that's available on the town website.
Right, but if we can just make it clear that this is what we've sent them.
Yep, and that'll all get laid out next week at the meeting, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, the work that's been done, so.
All right, CDICR.
They did not meet since then, but they did, we had a Zoom call with some of the members, and the next day for the Pride Potluck is June 15th. It'll be a Saturday, 12 to 5-ish timeframe. So we're outlaying some of the events and the, you know, people who'll be there, you know, what kind of activities, things like that. I think their meeting was canceled this week and pushed to next week?
I think their meeting next week.
Yeah, next Wednesday. So they were supposed to have a meeting tomorrow night, but that got pushed to next Wednesday.
Oh, they did not meet since then.
And policymaking committees, Denise, did we have any update?
I think they did.
I think they did.
Yeah? I think they did.
We will get back to that if we have misplaced that right now.
Old business, Consul DeRoz.
Yes, we have three motions for appropriations from Town Manager Moreno. And again, all three coming out of Finance Committee earlier tonight with a positive recommendation. The first motion, that the Town Council vote to appropriate certified free cash as listed below or take any other action thereto. And the motion is to move $100,000 in free cash, split evenly, $50,000 for each. $50,000 moved to the compensated absence reserve fund, and $50,000 for the OPEB trust fund. And Consul Belcher, I don't know if you can add maybe a little detail that you were adding during the meeting, but a little bit of the history around compensated absence reserve fund, three employees total.
I'll pass that over to the President.
The President can do that, either one?
And this will, if this is, if this motion is passed, it will leave a balance in free cash of $520,932.
Right.
So the OPEB trust fund is, it's other benefits after retirement, right? And every city in town has an incredibly large amount, and this is starting to make a dent, right? A very small dent into that. We have been, we have been very fortunate in our retirement system that we are basically fully funded. Now we have to start hitting this one. So this is a contribution that we're making to this. We did the same thing last year. The compensated absence reserve fund is, there are employees that, as they approach retirement, have certain packages in their, in their contracts for buyback of sick time and such. So this is to make sure that we never get hit with anything like that and we're not expected, right? So we wanna make sure that we have adequate money in there to, when a situation occurs, we have the money there, they get paid what they, what they're owed, and that's it, we're not affecting any other departments or any other revenue funds. It was created a couple of years back. We did something similar last year. We were, the Town Manager had actually requested more last year. We cut it in half a little bit, because we thought we were safe doing it, and we were. And now this is just replenishing that. So this did come out of committee with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any further discussion on this. Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Consul Tassinari.
Yes.
Consul Munson.
Yes.
Consul DiMarco.
Yes.
Consul Ilo.
Yes.
Consul Swope.
Yes.
Consul DeRoz.
Yes.
Vice President Belcher.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes. Motion is passed. Consul DeRoz.
Second motion appropriating retained earnings in the Ferry Enterprise Fund in the amount of $20,000 to cover the costs that the fund has or will incur in fiscal year '24. These expenses include insurance, fuel, repairs, payroll, et cetera. The Finance Office will apply the funds to the various accounts where expenses are incurred or take any other action thereto. So that's $20,000 retained earnings. The Ferry retained earnings balance currently $24,151. The amount requested is $20,000. So the Ferry retained earnings after the motion approval, if approved, would be $4,151.
And this also came out of finance with positive recommendation. Again, this is the Ferry Reserve, which we thought it would be appropriate, and it was, to make sure it stayed open last year, even though the Ferry, as of now, has been passed on to the T. In terms of managing and running it, we thought, you know, you might have some bills coming in that, late coming in and such, so now we've paid them off. And expectation is that, I would guess, in next fiscal year, we'll be eliminating this, there will be some sort of request potentially from the Town Manager to eliminate this enterprise fund. But this motion is just to pay the old bills that came in. Still has a positive balance of a little over $4,000. Came out of, again, came out of committee with positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion on the motion, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. All those who say no, the ayes have it. Consul DeRoz.
Third and final motion. This is regarding the fiscal year '24 TNC mitigation ADA sidewalk study. The motion is to appropriate and transfer $13,656.56 from the Fund 727 RRAP rideshare to the Capital Project account for the ADA sidewalk study. In the fiscal year '24 capital plan, $52,000 was appropriated for this study, and the bids came in higher than anticipated, and this will cover the overage or take any other action thereto. So the balance as of today is 44, excuse me, as of April 1st, $44,225, requested $13,656. That would leave an ending balance of $30,569.
All right, again, this came out of committee with positive recommendation, does not require a second. And using this money from the rideshare is good. Every community, anytime a ride, an Uber or a Lyft is originated in your community, you get a small, minute percentage of that. You know, show cities of Boston and other big cities get a lot more money. We don't get that much, but it never really has been used, and we thought that this was a fantastic place to use it, ought to use some of it. So I am encouraged that the Finance Committee did make positive recommendation on this. And any discussion on this? Consul Munson.
Thank you, Consul President. Just a quick question was, so if we asked for bids and they came in higher, are we still gonna be short as a result, even with this additional funds?
We have 52 from the capital plan plus this balances the bid.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're set.
All right, great.
Which is why we're doing this, to make up the money that wasn't there.
Just enough to kind of get.
Yes. Any other discussions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Consul Tassinari.
Yes.
Consul Munson.
Yes.
Consul DiMarco.
Yes.
Consul Ilo.
Yes.
Consul Swope.
Yes.
Consul DeRoz.
Yes.
Vice President Belcher.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes. Motion is passed. All right, new business. Nomination for Precinct One Town Consul. We have.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. We have two individuals that have put in for this position, and they are Patrick Costigan and Celeste Rivera Hewitt. They are both here with us tonight, and I thank them both for attending. So how this process will go is, we will ask for nominations from the council to nominate individuals to be appointed on. We will, if, we'll go down through each council. If they have any question of the candidates, we will ask them, they will answer them. We will then take a vote, and any candidate who receives five votes will, yep, five votes, will be the next council for Precinct One. That term will end next December, I think, December 31st, 2025.
Yep.
So I'm opening the floor for nominations. Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Pat Costigan.
Patrick Costigan's name is in nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Consul DiMarco. Are there any other nominations? Consul Swope.
I'd like to nominate Celeste Hewitt.
Nomination is in for Celeste Hewitt. Any? Second. Second by Consul Tassinari. All right. I thank both candidates. I thank the council for their nominations. So the floor is open. There are two candidates that have been nominated. I will go simply down the line and ask if there are any questions of these candidates. Consul Tassinari.
I would actually like each candidate to give us an example or some of their history on community activism, I don't know, most recently or in your entire professional history.
Start with that, if you're in the front row.
I'd be glad to go first.
Sure.
As far as my involvement with the town, I think a lot of you know who I am, Pat Costigan. I work with a lot of you. I've been on the other side of the political spectrum with a lot of you as well. So thank you, council, for your job here tonight and welcoming me as well. As far as my involvement with the town, I'll just say it starts with my family moving here in 1950. Renad Costigan, pet custodian. My father was a man of the year in 95 for his youth services to the, went to Little League Commission here at its inception. And my cousin Bernie, on Shirley Street, auxiliary police for many, many years. So I think the tradition of, of giving to the community, I love Winthrop. So I've been over thirty, thirty years myself as town council, I'm sorry, not yet anyway. Democratic town committee member, and also voted on to go to the delegate every year as well. I've been on many, many campaigns here in town as well. I did coach Little League several years with my father back in the eighties as well. So I'm well involved with the town itself. I worked for the Mass Water Resource Authority, and the reason why I was so interested in working for them was because I swam at the same beaches when you come up with a ring around your chest, you know, when the, when the Flomda had, had cancer and everything else. So environmentally, to do something about them, an avid fisherman as well. This town is, is a gem. It's spectacular, and I went through and through all my life, as, as my family has been as well. So that's my passion, keep Winthrop, this little community we have here, a gem it is.
Thank you, Pat.
Celeste.
Hi, my name's Celeste Rivera Hewitt. I'm slightly newer to Winthrop. I arrived here in 2015 initially, and my husband and I bought our home here in 2018. I'm from a place far, far away called East Boston. Those of you who may, or to be, I'm a mom, a wife, a stepmom. My siblings live here. They've been raising their families here for over 20 years. And in terms of my community activism, I have led two campaigns that affect us not, both regionally, the Oui See Casino Opposition against a $4 million initiative, and we are grassroots completely. It started in 2010, all the way through to 2014, where we had to defend ourselves against predatory legislation. We won, and we still had to defend our, our victory. And then again in 2016, against another multimillion dollar initiative, pretty much a two-person show on a statewide ballot initiative. Prior to all of that, you know, hand-to-hand combat on the casino front, mostly involved in community galvanizing initiatives, Columbus State Parade, festivals, that kind of thing. I did initiate the first pride flag raising in East Boston over at Pierce Park in cooperation with Mass Port and our other officials, which is unique for East Boston activists. And most currently, I am serving on the harbor keepers I have for, since 2016, and that is an environmental stewardship initiative that is really focused on folks on this side of Boston Harbor, the environmental impacts, making sure that we're not only educated in terms of what the recourse are, and also really engaging with development projects and really kind of giving insight and input. My professional life, I work for a small mom and pop business. I've ranged, my career has taken me from global supply chain management to local mom and pop initiative. Daily, I deal with, you know, policies, procedures, compliance, hands-on with development. We have, you know, some property holdings, and I'm involved from the community engagement and approval process, engaging with DEP, municipal entities, that kind of thing. So my experience, again, I know I'm from very far away, but the reason why I've gone from, you know, kind of more of a global environment to a small, local environment because I believe home is the priority, our community is the priority, and I've always been hands-on, no matter where I am, no matter where I live. So I'd be proud to represent precinct one.
Thank you. Councilor Munson, any questions?
I want to thank both of you. I think both of you would be great candidates and great counselors. It seems to me that you both do the right thing regardless of how many people are saying not to, or, I just feel like you have integrity and I can, and I can feel that. Also, your intelligence is obvious. Both of you have this clear kind of way of thinking and speaking, and I appreciate that. So I think both of you would be great. The one question I do have, and I think is really the reason why I'm bringing this up is because it's the reason why I'm choosing who I'm choosing, I'm most likely, is that it feels though you have to have some sense of what Winthrop needs as a result of being here for a long time. Can you explain to me what you feel as though being a part of Winthrop, or how long does it take to become, to know what Winthrop needs, you know, is the question? I know it's, it's a hard one, but.
What it needs to be as far as Winthrop, I think is your question. I think it's dedication to the town, excuse my back.
You're good.
And the fact that, you know, Winthrop's a small community, we're being encroached upon by the big cities repair. The traffic is just terrible the way it is, needless to say, I don't have to say that to anybody. With regards to Winthrop itself, it is a small community, as I mentioned, it's, it's a gem, it's, it's a, it's a comfortable community. I think a lot of people want to keep it that way, especially the people who were born and raised here. I know the arguments that are going on right now, but with the town of Winthrop itself, our problem is we, we don't have an income stream. I understand that. But at the same time, I believe responsible development in this town is a necessity. We have to raise money. We've got the underlay, we've got Mass Port, but at the same time, I think a town is judged on how it treats its children, its elderly, its disabled, and its veterans. So we can't forget about those people, especially the children. You know, and some of the talk right now is there's going to be an increase in students. Again, there's only so many after-school programs. There should be extracurriculars, I could name a few off, but at the same time, I think Winthrop is challenged substantially as we go forward. And it's, it's not going to be easy, but at the same time, I think we've got some great people here who can really make a difference in this town. So it has to be responsible, and it has to take Winthrop into consideration first. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you. Celeste.
Sure. To answer your question, how long does it take? It's, I don't know if there's a timeframe that could be put on it. I think as individuals, we all want the same things. We want safety, we want security, we want the ability to be able to live, work, raise a family, be successful, whatever that means for each of us. What does it take from an individual to become part of a community is to be willing to roll up your sleeves and do the hard work. All of kind of the talking points that I mentioned earlier, was all done on a volunteer basis, because I am just a ferocious defender of my family, my home, my community. Winthrop is now my community. My family is part of Winthrop. They've been here for decades. So I think it really just depends on what you're willing to do, what you're willing to give. People come in, they take up residence on the waterfront, and they don't engage, they don't come into the city, they don't come to meetings, they don't get involved. That's not the kind of person I am. So I think that's how you measure, not over longevity. And, and I get it, you know? When people come into East Boston and they start, you know, you know, I, I bite my tongue too, right? I'm though, I'm like, okay, I, I stop myself from saying, well, how long have you been here? No, it's what have you done? What are you contributing? What are you interested in doing? And how, what's your vision? Right? I think that's important, measure, that's the goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor DeMarco.
So I already made my decision. I'm going to be voting for Pat, Celeste. I think you are incredibly talented. I think you're a great candidate. I, I think Pat is the right person at this time. After everything you just said, I don't think there's anything you can say negatively about Pat that would disqualify him from the position. And I just think he's the perfect candidate right now. So that's why I'm voting for him.
Councilor Iello, any questions?
Just a statement, I want to thank you both for putting your names forward. Both very impressive candidates. Unfortunately, we only have one slot. I do hope whoever does not prevail tonight finds a way of getting involved in this, you know, staying in this community, because I think as Councilor DeRoz mentioned earlier, the needs are phenomenal, and we've got a very small town staff, we've got a town council. So I urge whichever one of you does not get this slot, find a home with us, we'll take your talent, and we'd gladly use it as aggressively as you're willing.
Hundred percent.
Thank you both. Hundred percent. Councilor Swol.
Thank you, I, both of you, thank you for running. I think it's, it's sort of challenging to put your name out there to see how it goes because you never know. But I too want to echo what Joe just said. It, we're, we're so in need of talent to come forward. We have talent, we just sometimes don't see them. I do have a couple of questions for you both. If you were to describe your, I guess, what you, you personally have done that you're most proud of in your job as well as in the town, or the town in East Boston, or, you know, what, in, in the last five years, what are the two specific things that you have accomplished?
Pat?
My own accomplishments with regards to the town.
And the job.
And the job. Well, they should know I work for Mass Water Resource Authority as a safety program manager. I've been there 31 years, and I've had the benefit of working with a tremendous amount of Winthrop people as well. My job is to keep all of them safe. As we know, the challenges with the underlay, a lot of issues as it relates to safety and so forth and so on. I'm not here to talk about that. That's at the executive level. But myself, I pride myself on keeping the workers on Deer Island safe. It hazards hazards. The workers down there do a hell of a job, especially the Winthrop folk. A lot of you know who they are. The things they do down there to keep that plant running is unbelievable. So it's my job to bestow OSHA for those workers, support them, and at the same time, make sure they're educated, trained, and they have everything they need to do the job right. And they also have an outlet confidentiality to, to come to me if that be the case, and we will address that problem. So I pride myself on protecting those people. As far as the town, I think about the Miller Field. I was on that committee as well, with maybe some of you here in this room. That was a big success. I think $10, $11 million, somewhere in there. But promoting that field, again, debt exclusion, a lot of people said it couldn't be done. If you sell it the right way, it's going to work. That's just it. If you can't go for all the pie, you got to ratchet it back and make it the appetite for the Winthrop folks that much more attractable. And that's what I really think needs to be done in this town. So again, you remember, there's people on fixed incomes, there's people who are, don't have the money, out of work, and so debt exclusion, that's a challenge as well, but I'm proud of Miller Field the way it stands right now. And again, schools also play a big part in this community as well. So that's just that small cornerstone of hopefully what, what will come in the future. So those are the two things I'm proud of.
Thank you both.
So the two things that I'm proud of, I alluded to, kind of my day job, I'm involved in project managing development for property. In the last five years, have been three projects, residential size, very unique, in, in their own corridor. So I share the pride for both my, my employer, and then also a little bit of self-pride, where we made the decision to not just level the whole area, but to make some unique, very interesting developments that were right-sized to replace housing that had either been demolished or that echoed stuff that was happening in the neighborhood. Now, those of you engaged in the development process, if you're a neighbor to a development project, most people aren't that happy about the thoughts of cranes and things coming in. I'm completely proud about our decision to, A, not just take it in one shot and put maximum density, and then the other piece too is being on the front lines of engaging with the community and the community process, taking their inputs and responding, and really earnestly engaging with them. No false promises, no lies, no accidental, oh, we couldn't quite fit it in, though we agreed upon it. So that's, when I talk about my day-to-day, that's how I operate, and that's who the people that I work for operate. And then going back a little bit more in five years, just going back to, it was a statewide ballot initiative with the casinos, then it was the local casino initiative, and that's emblematic of my take with engaging with predatory legislation. And I am completely proud of myself for the five-year initiative from, you know, 2010 through 2014, pushing back even when, you know, we won and they tried to, you know, push us over, and we held them accountable, and we wouldn't take no for an answer. And then again in 2016, where we pulled in the reins, and I'm talking local, you know, people, just pulled in the reins and said, no, we will not let the legislature approve this, we will not let people come in and, you know, take advantage of us. So those are kind of my two points of pride. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilor DeRoz.
I just want to say it's been a pleasure to talk with each of you, as you were thinking through sticking your neck out like this. And for those of us who have stuck our neck out, we relate and we appreciate. Sometimes you run into an embarrassment of riches, and I think we have that tonight. Either one of you would be wonderful additions to the council and wonderful servants of the town. And I just want to call out two quick things in comments that each of you said that reminds me of why I love both of you. Pat, living one block from Winthrop Beach and braving that water maybe once, twice, three times a year, I can't imagine what it would be like to walk out of that water literally with a visible ring around the chest. So as we talk about climate, as we talk about environment, as we talk about, you know, clean water, clean air, I mean, that's such a vivid example of, of why we do it, to make the community livable and enjoyable. So thank you for the visual that I hope sticks with everybody. And Celeste, you know, having grown up a gay man and the only gay kid I knew in Little Waterville, Maine when I grew up, and I hear you say you were the first one to raise a pride flag in East Boston, thank you for sticking your neck out for people who, even still today, every time I grab my partner's hand, the thought crosses my mind to look around and make sure we're in a safe place that we can do that. So I appreciate you, I appreciate you both. I have a simple question. Let's assume you were to be elected, and the four-year term is up, and you look back, what would be the legacy you would want to leave? What, what imprint, impression, accomplishment would you like to be able to look back and say you did for the town?
Only a year and a half at this point.
Right.
As far as myself, this, this opportunity fell into my lap. I had every intention of running the next term. I lived on Buchanan Street, actually it was Mr. Gill. Mr. Gill sold me my house in 1998. Thank you. Wasn't a great house, I did a lot of work to it. Thanks, anyway. He did get a good deal.
What are your proudest accomplishments, achievements that you supported me as a councilor?
Absolutely, absolutely. That was a pleasure.
President Gill, you're slowing us down here.
Would you repeat the question, please? I'm sorry.
If you look back on a four-year term on the town council, what would be the one legacy, the one accomplishment you would look back on?
As far as my legacy, again, we're talking 3A here, it's no, I was going to introduce myself with a joke about 3A, but it's not the time to do it, but that's a serious issue, 3A. I need the facts on that with regards to both sides before I'll make any decision. But I think what Winthrop is faced with is how much development does the town need and how much can we withstand? What do we want to turn this town into? Again, do we want it where it's a town for the children to go to after-school programs only? You know, it'd be nice to have a pool, it'd be nice to have maybe Color God back, maybe the, the Drum and Bugle Corps maybe? My cousin Bernie, who, you know, lived, lived on Belcher, which I happened to buy the home, was, it still is, the, one of the bugle men from the St. John's. So, and again, he was very instrumental, no pun intended, with, with music in, in, in high school as well. So it did him very well. And as we know, it's a fact, if you introduce music to children, it opens their minds and they, they will learn much, much better. So I'm afraid that, you know, the phones we all carry today, yeah, they are doing damage to the children. You know, they're not getting out of the house. If we maybe had a, a pool, maybe if we had Color God, if we had more music, amongst a lot of other things, the children, again, would grow up to, to love this town as much as we did. My wife is several generations here in town as well. So my legacy would be to leave it for a place that the next generation would appreciate as a Winthrop resident. And don't get me wrong, I know it's tough to afford homes here, but again, affordability has to come into play somewhere, if that's another issue for another day. But let's not lose sight of the children in this town, especially the ones who are coming up and give them the opportunity we had. I mean, I'm a product of, you know, prop two and a half private, and a lot of these kids, these are post-two-and-a-halves, where there's no, no money. So I'll leave that at there. So, but I pride myself on hopefully having the children look up and say, hey, that's a great swimming pool, or, hey, Color God today, you know, let's march, we're traveling, so forth and so on. I remember that in 1981 or two, believe it or not, so I'm not that old. But that's my legacy.
Thank you. Celeste.
You know, my goal, looking back, if, if I'm selected this evening, would be for the constituents of precinct one and all across Winthrop saying, you know what, we were represented, we were listened to. City council, town council was approachable, they listened to us. I'm, I'm not enrolled, I'm moderate, I don't like to dabble in partisan politics. Max, who's known me for, since before he was born, will tell you, even when people come at me, I don't get ugly, I just stay focused, I stay laser-focused. I don't have the resources or the time to, to, to mess around. And so I, I would hope that. That, that's my number one goal, is to make sure that we can kind of advance the goals and the priorities of Winthrop for those, this is my forever home. That's what people ask. We bought our house, this is the first, my first house, I bought it just before turning 50 with my husband, and, you know, this is our forever home. My family's here, you know, I, Winthrop is my community, and I, I just, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. Just thank you to both of you for meeting with all of us and talking with us. And sometimes the hardest decisions are when you have two good options, and I think that's where we are tonight. So thank you both, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I, you know, I'm going to echo the sentiments of all the other counselors. It's incredibly hard to put yourself out there and, and stand up in front of a lot of people and talk about yourselves and talk about your dreams for the town. I think you both love Winthrop. I think, I hope that we all love Winthrop and wish for nothing but good things for us, and, you know, we're always going to agree to disagree on a lot of different topics, but we work together as a council to try to move the town forward. But I do, again, applaud you guys for both taking the time and effort to do this. It's, you know, Councilor DeRoz mentioned four years, and as Councilor Tassaneri said, it's only a year plus.
Only a year and a half.
Really is, only a year and a half, and these elections come up quickly, and if it's not Precinct One, it could be at large, it could be Planning Board, it could be Zoning Board of Appeals, it could be so many other things. And it's been mentioned a lot that, you know, to have talent, and it's one thing to have the talent, it's another thing to put it out there and to use it, and again, I applaud you both for doing that. What we will do now is take a roll-call vote. Five votes is needed, if by some circumstance it's a four-to-four vote, we would ask a few more questions, re-vote, if it still stayed four-to-four, we would continue it to another meeting. So I will ask again, thank you both, and I will ask for a roll-call vote, please.
Council Tassaneri.
Celeste Rabiro Hewitt.
Council Munson.
Pat Costigan.
Council DeMarco.
Pat Costigan, and sorry, Celeste.
Council Ayello.
Pat Costigan.
Council Swope.
Celeste Hewitt.
Council Duras.
Pat Costigan.
Vice President Belcher.
Pat Costigan.
President Leteri.
Pat Costigan. I congratulate Pat, as we all can right now, and Celeste. I would encourage Pat to come to Town Hall tomorrow, if available, to be sworn in, and you would be able to sit in at our next council meeting, which will be a special meeting on Tuesday, and we will talk to you about that before that. But again, thank you both, it's, again, it's very difficult to put yourselves out there, and I thank you immensely for doing that, and hope to be hearing more from both of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, new business, elementary schools, potential roof and solar project, we were in the process of reviewing Gorman and Cumming solar power purchase agreements and lease agreements. We are hoping to enter into an agreement that will afford us the opportunity to get replacement roofs for both schools. I'm going to send this to Finance, refer this to Finance. Delivery of the budget has already been done, we are into a second round of public comment.
Yes.
One question on new business before we move to public comment. Do we get a copy of that lease agreement to the council?
We will have.
Representatives will be in to meet with Finance at your next meeting.
We're going to have the representatives meet directly.
Yeah, we'll get it out there, yeah.
And we're going to have them present just to Finance, not to.
They'll come to the council after that, but they're going to rent to Finance first, so you guys can drill down and ask the hard questions.
All right, public comment, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Devon Fields, I'm a homeowner in Precinct Five. I didn't intend to make a public comment tonight, but I'm unable to join the information session next week for the 3A, so I brought in my comment this evening. I'm expressing my support for compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, and I'm doing that for a couple of reasons, but one of which is, when Charlie Baker left office, he said publicly and on the record that the number-one issue that kept him up at night for the Commonwealth was housing. There is not enough housing in Massachusetts for all of the people who live here, and so he signed this law in an effort to incentivize communities to make the change that they weren't making on their own. I don't believe that this is a perfect piece of legislation, nor do I believe that there is any perfect piece of legislation, but I think that a patriotic thing to do is when your state asks you to step up, you work with them and find a compromise. One of the ways that I think we can do this is by convening public, open processes. I have high hopes for this newly hired consultant, that we will have an opportunity to engage thoughtfully in fact-based information. I hope our town website will be a place where people can go for information that just provides them with the basics of what this legislation does, which is remove a piece of red tape to enable in certain sections of this community development by right. That is not a commitment for building, that is a zoning chief, which is one lever in the process to incentivize development, and I think that's something that gets a little bit lost in this conversation, so I just wanted to express my support for compliance. I hope that the town council presides over this thoughtfully, and that not all of Winthrop is saying no to 3A.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
President Leteri, council, everyone here. My name is Marco Bishon, I actually live over on Payne Street. I apologize to you that I have not been able to be here for more of the informational side of things, I'm a very busy volunteer, I'll leave it there. That said, you know that, and I don't have all the information, I actually appreciate what you just said about Charlie Baker signing that, it's one thing I did not know. Yet, I sat here, and the times I sat here, I heard, close to a third of the time I sat here, talking about water mitigation and issues surrounding that. We've all seen closure and backup. You know, empty spaces that we have in this town, we have cemeteries, we have parks, we have country club, which is basically a place for water to like go to. Let's be real, that's not going to be developed, it's not going to be sold off. There's very little place to build. I mean, I appreciate what the Temple did as far as selling off some of their property and building up, there was a fire over there, I know that's going to be a little, we just don't have the level of infrastructure allowable for this, and I remember actually listening to you talk about the CBD, and how everything that was involved with that, as far as the sewage and everything else, just to take on the additional amount of stuff that needs to be taken on, let alone additional development. We have a certain limited capacity here, in my opinion, we have a small town, I don't see bringing in that much more, and I kind of disagree with the idea of by right, because I've seen by right be played out, and I'll just say that folks that do construction have really good legal attorneys that advise them, they know how to navigate the system, and unless Winthrop is extremely aggressive on putting in place checks and balances against that and maintaining that, by right does trump, and it does move forward. And so, yeah, I'm against it, and I would actually like to hear how you all feel about it. As a group of folks that are here to represent us legally, where do you stand? Quite clearly, you know, where do you stand on this, as far as joining or not joining compliance? Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane.
Diane, Precinct Two. Just quickly, since Charlie Baker signed this law, and it's actually been changed five times.
Yes.
Five times. I actually thought it was two, someone corrected me the other day, it's five, to the point where those in the legislature at the time have no idea what they signed in that three paragraph law that was buried in 100 economic bills. I'll say that with respect to, and since then, Charlie Baker's Secretary of Housing has since denounced what Haley has done with it. Wow, we never thought she would take it this far. I'm paraphrasing, but that's what he said on Channel Four in an interview, you can look it up. With respect to the grants, to be clear on this, this is our money, and the court will clarify that no one has any right to keep our money from us. I'll say that I wasn't around during the civil rights movement, I wasn't born yet at the height of the thing, but I have never, ever, ever, ever seen such immense community engagement and just utter, like, pushback and rejection of state authority at the local level. So here are the towns that have since voted this down, that means getting off your couch, which nobody wants to do anymore, that means getting off your couch and showing up and ticking the box or raising your hand, just like I am today, and taking time away from my children and everyone else in this room, taking time away from their families, and showing up and voting things down. Littleton, Milton, Marshfields, Wakefield, Last Night, Hanson, Raleigh, Norwell, and that's just for starters. I cannot tell you how much work that takes, because this is not simple, straightforward stuff, this is stuff that requires explanation and connecting with fellow neighbors and community members to explain to them what this actually really means, it's a lot of work. It's not like the straightforward, political, tick-the-box type of stuff that goes along the party line, like, this is not what it says on paper. This multifamily thing, that's not what these actually are, these buildings, okay? These are no occupancy-limited buildings, so this may be my next point. Even those that have complied would never, ever give their most valuable, developable land, which is our CBD, would never put the box around there, okay? Here's why. That land, that designation has the highest impact on this town, as opposed to what these other towns have done, who actually have complied, who in their statute, they've written, well, we've put the box around Flower Way or et cetera, and I've had friends send me their bylaws, friends in towns that have complied, and they've designated buildings that are already built, where no developer will make money because they put the zones around their, but we are saying to the state, hey, here's some developable, high, okay, I'll wrap that, thanks, Joe. At the end of the day, we need a lot more engagement, not after the fact, not after this new consultant has come in and designated these zones. We need, if you're really looking to do this, then you need to understand from the community what they think is a good idea here. Just so you know, if you put it in the CBD, only 25% of what's above it counts. If you want to have a business there, only 25% of what you put above it counts, which means you have to multiply that number of units that the state is looking for by four, or expand it, and we don't have a lot of land, so you're going to expand over single counties.
Thank you, Diane.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone Zoom?
Well, I'll give it a go. So, you know, when I, excuse me, Paul Cruchow, I'm in Council President Leteri's district. Thank you, Judy. You know, when they speak about 3A, I don't know that anybody doesn't say housing crisis, housing crisis, housing crisis, housing crisis. How do we know? Do you know there's a housing crisis, and if so, how? Well, if you go back and you look at the government data, not my data, government data, you'll find out from the census and government data that in the last five years in Massachusetts, we built one house, one whole house for every 1.4 new residents. That sound like a housing crisis? It doesn't in my mind. Additionally, we all know that we're losing well over 4,400 people per month, that's what we were losing a couple of years ago, and now we're losing more. So we're building more, and every place you look, there's more building, so is there a housing crisis? Does anybody have data that can prove to me there's a housing crisis? Well, you say, well, housing is expensive, that's an affordability crisis, and that's a different reason, and I'm going to blame government for that, and we'll get into that discussion if you'd like another time. Additionally, in the last couple of days, California, on the other side of the country, has a similar law as to this 3A law, and a state judge just ruled that a town that contested it, that the town won, because in the state of California's constitution, they have a home rule clause, exactly what Massachusetts has, a home rule clause. So it was struck down that the town had to go along in California because their home rule are in the constitution, like us. The other question you have to ask yourself is, are we all here to represent the community or to rule? As you know, you are elected as representatives, so I trust that you will do that and you will represent the wishes of the community. Additionally, when people talk about, we need development to the town, that's fine, but we possess the ability to develop this community right here in this room. If that's what we think is the best thing to do, we possess that. We do not need the state to come in and tell us what to do. We don't need that, and we don't have to have it. We have plenty of competent people on the town council, and we have a plethora of talent out there, correct? So let's use that, and we don't need to be told what to do. Thank you.
I know.
Yes.
Mark, Precinct Two. When is the council going to let us know what they're going to do?
Every councillor has the opportunity to let you know individually, but as a council as a whole, we obviously have until December, but I'm sure we will be discussing this in earnest, and we were making decisions much before that. We're waiting to hear back, as was said earlier this evening, from the state, and I think you'll hear more next Tuesday night. I'm hoping.
So, once you hear back from your response from, I forget what it is.
I've got Secretary Augustus.
Will you be making a decision after that response?
Well, it has to go to the Planning Board, and they have to come back with a proposal for us to vote on. So yes, I anticipate it wouldn't be that much.
Honestly, the vote no, Patrick in this town, doesn't want to be backed into a poll where we can't have a special election.
You can always have a special election, even if we were to vote on December 31st, you could have a special election in January, if that was, and I'm hoping to God it does not come to that, yes. Is it, Judy?
Yes, Judy Hamlin, Precinct Five. I guess my rebuttal to you is, if you listen to the fire chief and the police, we don't have the manpower and the safety, the ambulance is, they run it, takes 20 minutes, that's a long time. I want to go learn CPR, so I can help if someone in my house needs it. We don't have the ability to have 880 more units. That's how I feel, I feel like the specialists have come out and told us this, why are we ignoring that? Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Joe.
Lieutenant, Mr. President. Jack Dowell, Precinct One. I attended a Intergovernmental Strategy Committee, a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it was stressed at that meeting, we're all involved, this was five people, a very important topic. One of the topics was the C-ball, of course, and we've already discussed that, maybe we can move forward, somebody can take the role by the horns and start the process of us getting out of town, when it's necessary to get out of town, there's a storm of water. The second thing on the agenda was the mitigation between Mass Water Resource and the town of Winthrop and Mass Court. I mentioned to the Chair, President Tassaneri, that are we so fortunate and lucky to have both of these contracts come up at the same time? We're very fortunate. One was a 20-year contract, and one was a 10-year contract, so they're both coming up right now. So it was stressed at that meeting that it's very important to get all the data that we need for this mitigation, gather it together, and make some type of presentation with this data that is going to be accumulated by the Intergovernmental Strategy Committee. Where are we going to go with this committee? I looked up this month's agenda, and there hasn't been a committee meeting scheduled, where the first meeting was proposed that it's essential that we get this data together very quickly, or else we might have to budget or an end of the year type of thing, and that was mentioned a few times by all involved. So I'm asking why there isn't another meeting scheduled for this month? If it was so important that that first meeting gathered all this data, so we can have an argument against both entities? I don't know if there's any events, no schedule, nobody's talking about it. I was told this is the most important year or two years for the town of Winthrop going forward for the next possibly 20 years. So where is this committee going with this project? That's my question, I hope you put it on the agenda somehow. Mr. Tassaneri, you're the Chair, I hope we have it on the agenda for this month, or maybe next month, I don't know what days, early in the month, late in the month, maybe I have a few. It's so important to bring this stuff to the committee or to the public, why are we not having a meeting? Thank you very much.
If anyone on Zoom.
Shannon Pelosi.
Hi, Shannon Pelosi, Precinct Three. I'll just start with saying that I'm adamantly opposed to 3A. I think there's a lot of pieces why, so I won't get into all of them, but I think that one of the things that I think is really important. one of the things that I think is really important that people acknowledge is that, you know, the push for 3A really comes down to fundamental ideological differences in how people prioritize. I know personally, I prioritize my family. My family includes my parents, my husband, my kids, and, you know, my parents go back, or my family goes back four generations in Winthrop, and we made a choice to live in Winthrop, and we continue to make the choice to live in Winthrop, because Winthrop is a very unique and special place to live. Increasing the density of Winthrop is not only going to change Winthrop and where we chose to live and raise our family, it's actually going to be unsafe. We have, we're facing, you know, significant flooding. Everybody has seen what has happened in our town and our communities over the last several years. I can't remember even as a child how many times I could count on one hand how many times it flooded the way that it has in the past year. So when the flood season closed in our year, we were limited in access and the backup in our town and getting our children to school. God forbid there's another public safety emergency. We have one of the largest sewer street implants in the country. I don't pull me off where we are at the time, but certainly at one point, we were one of the largest. We're certainly bearing a significant burden for not only our town and our surrounding cities, but even beyond. I live on the corner of Harrison and Shirley, I'll tell you how many fire engines and apparatus go down there every day. On a personal level, I had my father go into the emergency room over the past week and spent 50 hours, five zero hours, in the emergency department. This is not a staffing issue, this is a capacity issue. And I'll tell you that because I've had several correspondents with Chief of Staff at Mass General Brigham. It is a capacity issue. This isn't even a Winthrop issue, this is a surrounding community issue. We are over capacity. This isn't a matter of how do we preemptively prevent or build our infrastructure for an increase in population. We are in crisis now, right now. So I would say to the people who are pro-3A, that's fine, I'm actually not going to sit here and try to convince you otherwise, but you are prioritizing people that are coming into our communities and into our state over the people that have chosen to live here, build their lives here, worked really hard for generations to make their lives and their children's lives better, and pay their taxes. And now, a 79-year-old father with dementia has to sit in an emergency department for 50 hours. That is an equivalent of torture, okay? So for those of you who think that I'm making this personal, I will tell you, this is personal, okay? This town is so dear and special to so many people in this town, and we have people who are literally trying to destroy it. So I'm gonna sit here right now and tell you that yes, this is personal. We need to fight it to keep Winthrop what it is. And if you want to call us nippies and close-minded, go for it, that's fine. But I chose to live in this town, many people chose to live in this town, and we have a special town, and we have a right to preserve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon, and wishing your dad all the best. Any other public comment?
Vasili Malios.
Vasili.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Senator Al, Precinct Five. I heard a couple of comments at the beginning of this session. There are no incentives to this. Our tax dollars are being threatened by making us ineligible if we don't comply. So, you know, there aren't any incentives for us to build. It's actually gonna cost us to cover infrastructure, safety, and additional school costs. The second thing is that if there's a housing crisis for Massachusetts, why is it 177 MBTA communities that are stepping up to the plate? Why isn't the entire state stepping up? One thing that I wanted to address to the council is, if you agree, now let me rephrase it, if you disagree with this law, you should be voting it down, and you should be going to our state senator and our representative and saying, you need to go back to the governor and look at options to repeal this. There are more communities coming up, and they're listening to the facts, they're not taking this one-sided, we hired a consultant for planning, it is all one-sided, sided bias. You're hearing it from the MADC, you're hearing it from CHAPA, you're hearing it from HMA, they all have these toolkits to fool people. They're creating databases so that they can see density in your neighborhoods. We're gonna reveal, we'll share all this information on our Facebook page, Winthrop says no to 3A, but if you are a no, you should be saying, no, we're not looking to comply. Wait it out for the Secretary Augustus, hear what he has to say, negotiate in good faith. Once you hear back, put it to a no vote right away. We need to start supporting military, we need to start showing that this is going to impact Winthrop tremendously, and like Shannon said, we love Winthrop for a reason. And I hope, counsel, you think about why you stayed in Winthrop, why you represent Winthrop, and make that a part of your decision when it comes to your compliance decision on 3A. Thank you.
Thank you, Vasili.
Kurt Malo.
Kurt.
Hi, Kurt Barbour, Precinct Two. Just wanted to make sure you're here.
Yes, we can hear you, Kurt.
Okay. I know I've spoken up in different meetings about 3A, and how other states have tried to implement this, same exact concept, same idea. There are zero states that have been able to implement this that have been successful, and the data is there that you have to, they have to come back and create additional laws. And what they do is compile accessory dwelling units on top of this, and you will find that it doesn't matter where they implemented, low-income housing begins to go away. There's not, it's not as plentiful as it was in the beginning. So you're on the risk of actually losing low-income and affordable housing because of this. So that's on 3A, I'm a hard no, and I hope the council will really think about this through. As the law is written, it should be a no. If the law was written differently, then it could show benefits to the town and not hold our tax money against us. There could be some kind of different consideration for it, but as it is written, it should be a hard no. Another point I want to touch on, it's gonna be very quick, is hearing about the budget at the school, the money change going to the school, this budget, it's pretty disheartening, and I hope the council really will look at that and think it through. I know two and a half is gonna be pushed out there for the override. Again, I'm gonna be a hard no on that one also, until we really look at the budget and say, why are we making that change in the school? I understand things have increased, but we shouldn't be taking money away from the school and doing this split the way it is. I feel more money should be actually, 1% of CHAPA's 7% of money, a lot of it goes to the school. No questions asked about it. There's also other parts of the budget that still is very unclear when you start digging into it. There's like miscellaneous type items where, you know, you don't know what's under that listing or that line item. I don't know how we can get to more specific line items, like I looked at the RIT again, like I've looked at in the past, and there's still no line that says water. The utilities, I understand, is actually kind of squished into another one. So I'm glad that actually they put it, but we're also given money as a subsidy to the RIT costs, so it's kind of covering, it's kind of just squashing what's past due on. So for the budget, I just need to try and figure out, understand how we're getting to where we are. I'll keep looking at it, but it's not clear to the average citizen on many items out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Any other?
Nope, that's it.
All right. All right, public relations coming up on June 8th. There is a townwide yard sale, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. On June 27th, Winthrop Public Library celebrates its 125th anniversary. From now, there is an event from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. I encourage you to go to the Winthrop Public Library website, as well as the town website for more information on that. It's amazing, 125 years. Winthrop Farmers Markets are coming back, and the dates are June 16th and 30th, July 14th and 28th, August 11th and 25th, September 8th and 22nd, and October 6th. Farmers Markets will once again be held at Ingleside Park from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I'll now ask for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, me either.
Motion, there's no other comments tonight. Motion by Vice President Belcher, second. Second. Second by Counselor Tassaneri. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes, have it.